We will now open up the meeting for Thursday, September 21st, 2017. Carrie Bowden?
Here.
Frank Farrey?
Here.
Marshall Goff?
Here.
Ryan Kennedy?
Here.
Chad Segman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Malta-Joe?
Here.
Mayor Going?
Here.
This evening we have our prayer and pledge by our vice mayor.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions, and continue to remind us of all that we do here this evening and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of your name, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
May I please face the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to truly the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes of the regular session, September 7th, 2017?
Seven.
Second.
If there are no objections, motion carries. Petitions, communications, and public hearings, if you could please limit your comments to three minutes. Margaret Short, Post Office, Box 245, Clarksburg, wishes to address counsel concerning the drug house ordinance.
Hi, everybody. Okay, I saw a draft of the drug house ordinance, and I kind of skimmed through it, and I just wanted to offer a little bit of input on this. It's focused on landlords, and that's what I do. I manage rental property, so it affects me. So I wanted to just give you a sample of my world, okay? Okay, just this is an example. I went to a gentleman, single gentleman, he has a good job, good references, everything. Three months later, signed a year lease, three months later, he gets a girlfriend, they get married, and all of a sudden, when he's at work, somebody's dealing drugs in that house. Okay, so I screened this person, but I had no control of what happened after that point. So as I read through the draft, I'm looking at a couple of places, and I know it's just a draft, but there's a couple of places there where it says whether the landlord is notified or not, they will still be, what is it, penalized, fined, whatever, whether they know it or not. There's no mention of a certified letter, proof of contact with that landlord, which should be on record, just in case someone says so-and-so never gets fined, you know, because that happens sometimes. But I just wanted to, and I'm, if this is about inspections, I do inspect, I get inspections all the time. You can ask the guys in code enforcement, I've worked with Mr. Lenisa and Mr. Davis, and it's, you know, this isn't about getting inspections, it's about fairness. I, you know, I want to make sure that everyone's treated fairly. I've been for the inspections all along, like a two-year inspection, I think it's a good idea, but this ordinance, this particular ordinance with the mention of drugs, and it just seems like, well, you know, if you arrest the offending party, that helps them clean that place out. And then the other thing is, if it's going to work in cooperation with the magistrate court, because in order for me to put someone out, I can't just lock the door. I have to take them to court, and whatever that magistrate says, I mean, there's been times where I had a couple of guys that were partying all night long, lady upstairs couldn't sleep, had to go to work, she goes to court to testify against them, and magistrate and marshal gave them an extra 30 days to torment her. We'll let this go for good behavior, if you're good 30 days later. So, which eventually I got them out of there, but, and this poor lady had to live with them in the same building after that, but I couldn't put them out, and I'm sure they were doing drugs in there, but I couldn't do anything about it. You know, I went into the two guys, next thing you know, they're having parties, and who knows what all went on there. But that's what I'm dealing with, so if you keep that in mind when you're adopting this ordinance, and I offer any help, you know, any questions, if you want some 30 years' experience, I'll help.
We appreciate it. Yeah, we'll take you up on that.
And Ms. Short, I think from what you're saying, I think you're really going to really support this ordinance, because this, what this will allow is, when you have that specific issue, that's where the chief of police is acting on your behalf with the magistrate as well. So, we don't want that magistrate, what you're, just the example you gave, we're opposed to what they're doing to you. That's where this will step in. This only affects negatively to a property owner who ignores that, or allows it and condones it to go on.
If I get a certified letter saying that there's a problem?
Yes, and they will.
I can go straight to magistrate court with that.
Yes, and the letter will be written by the chief or the deputy chief stating that you've helped us and assisted us, and we are recommending to be victim. So it helps you.
That would help, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Stapleton wishes to address counsel concerning the Harrison County-West Virginia Historical Society. Vance House grant, funding?
Funding?
Funding.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cindy Stapleton. I'm the full-time mayor corps with the Harrison County-West Virginia Historical Society. I'm here to talk about the Salee Goff Vance House. It's actually right down the street at 123 OS Main Street. So Vance House is 210 years old this year. The Historical Society's owned it for 50 years this year as well. So, over the past four years, we've really done our part to take care of the house. We received a grant last summer, and we stabilized the back edition of the house. We've been working to get it painted, to reorganizing, make sure the collection, the archives are taken care of. So, yeah, so within the last year, we've actually had 76 visitors. Over the last three years, we've only had three to four every quarter. So we've really improved our visitor retention and getting people to come in. We had a couple from Texas that came to visit to do archival research and to visit the house. So we're really trying to get this house to be a resource for the community. And so I'm here because in this July, we received a $20,000 grant from the West Virginia Development Company, or co, West Virginia Development Grant, that would basically help to restore the Vance House steps. The steps are in very bad shape. They are flaky, and they're made of sandstone, and they are falling apart. I've fallen down the steps, the other mayor corps is falling down the steps, so are, while carrying things out of the house to go, you know, preserve it. So we are here, we went before the county commission, and they gave us $5,000 to help match our $10,000 grant. And I'm here as with the board of directors of the Harrison County Historical Society to see if you all would match the $5,000 that they gave us for the grant. If you have any questions, just let me know.
We will get back to you on that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. City managers report an update.
Some general updates. The Chestnut Street project, the contractor, Mountaineer Contractors, has predominantly completed. The roadway project, the pavement has been completed, as well as the center line has been painted as well. There's some miscellaneous work to be completed by the contractor, but we do anticipate the roadway to be open within a week. So that's good news, and we're looking forward to that roadway opening back up. Fall cleanup, beginning, annual fall cleanup begins Monday, October 2nd. It'll run the weeks of October 2nd through October 6th, October 16th through October 20th, and then conclude on the week of October 23rd through the 27th. And again, the full details are on the website. Dominique has already begun posting those schedules as well, on social media, referencing the website as well.
And Annette prepared for us a one-page handout when we do the walk next week, anybody. I'll text everybody to see where we want to meet and who wants to do it, but she condensed it into a one-page handout that we can give to the residents so they'll know the actual schedule in case they didn't read it or didn't see it on the website.
The rail trail down near Wendy's, several weeks ago, the administration, chief, deputy chief as well, we had an opportunity to meet with a large amount of property owners, really from Chestnut Street all the way down to the Triangle of Wendy's, within my conference room. So we had probably about 20, I'd say 20 property owners that we met with individually regarding a lot of the vacancy, vagrancy problems, as well as people just loitering within that area. And one of the issues came up was with, from Wendy's, about the rail trail, and obviously Gulf opening that up, really clearing out the brush, a lot of people going back there, or some people going back there hiding out, possibly doing drugs, sleeping back there, a lot of vegetation was growing up. Many years ago, we attempted to partner with the county commission, the planning to get the rail trail open from the VA Park down to the West End, really from economic impact. So what we did, we met with the Wendy's owner himself, Anthony Bellotti, the chief and deputy chief, walked the trail with him. They made a significant effort themselves, Wendy's, to open up their hillside so nobody can really hide up in there, let light through, really helped out a lot. And then we offered that we would go through that rail trail as well and clear out the vegetation. So within a week's time, we've cleared out about a 20-foot wide path, approximately about 400 feet long, and there's, and now, as of today, the actual walkable path is about nine feet wide. We put stabilization fabric down, cinders from our 2017 milling program, the millings that we saved, those are all placed back down on top of that. So really, if you have an opportunity to get down there, it's really a nice path to take a walk on and go through. We're working with the distributor down there to move the fence back a little bit more to open that part of the rail, or that trail up. But eventually, now you can go from Wendy's all the way out to Thorne and Camden Street, and then continue on to the, to the VA. So all that trail can be used by people, as well as the bike patrol for the police department, and can now get down in there well and traverse through there and keep an eye on things as well. So I think this will be an asset for the future going forward. So that trail is becoming available to use, so we encourage people to go out there and use it as well. Now, the flagpole project, this is over by Hughes Avenue, parking building on Hughes Avenue and also Third Street. The city participated in a project to install the flagpoles to assist with an Eagle Scout project. The installation and the flying of the flags will take place tomorrow, Friday, September 22nd, and then all that's left for the Eagle Scout candidate to come back and finish is concretes around the pole, as well as finalized in landscaping within that island right there. So that beautification project is moving forward as well. Hughes Avenue Parking Building sign project, the sign has been ordered at six feet by 24 feet, and the timeframe for installation will still be determined. Demolition, CND project landfill. The city's public works department is continuing to open CND landfill number three. We have received verbal notification from the DEP that we can begin utilizing that portion of CND landfill number three. It's about two acres, we've opened up the majority of it, so they're allowing us to begin placing demolition or structures there with, inside that landfill. And we also received notification that the DEP has closed out CND number two, which we requested to get three open. Clarksburg Urban Renewal Authority, they did have this meeting this morning, and they did approve the resolution to enter into a loan with MVB Bank in the amount of $400,000, and this dovetails back on what council already approved the ordinance as the guarantor for that loan as well. They also approved the modification to the URA plan, which is on council's agenda today under new business, is the first reading to approve the modification of that plan, which are the structures that were declared slum and blight. Lawsuits, we did have Henry Carpenter and Ruth Florence versus the city code department in regards to the demolition of a structure located at 206 Tuna Street. That has been dismissed without prejudice from, that's civil action as well on circuit court, and I have that here for you as well. Ryan, I know you like to see these and make your copy, so yourself for council. So this is the ruling that was entered as of this week. And then also, 116 Dodge Court, the city has received several interested parties inquiring about the purchase of 116 Dodge Court, so the administration will begin putting the advertisement together for sealed bids on that property, and then whatever the deadline is that we come up with, we will then put that on council's agenda after the bid opening, or after those sealed bids are opened, for council to award the sale of that property to the highest bidder. Clarksburg Uptown, the diversity statue was ordered and is fully funded by private contributions. The city administration did have a meeting today with the library director regarding the location and installation of that statue, as well as amongst many other issues at the library, their full master plan and things such as that as well, that we probably, in the future, probably want to have a work session with council on from funding mechanism side, but also very hopeful that we could partner with the county commission on that as well, as that is a Clarksburg-Harrison Library, and I think we really need to put the funding forth within that property to bring it up to what it needs to be. Economic development, the Moore Project. The city is continuing its project partnership while hauling debris. To date, six tons of material have been hauled from the former Kelly Miller School site. The city has assisted in securing a per-ton tax exemption waiver with Waste Management, as well as securing a $500 disposal fee from Waste Management as well. So that's going, that's being contributed towards the Moore Program. Robinson Grand Performing Arts Center, USDA funding, again, it's on the council's agenda for two resolutions for the funding, for approximately $12 million. The administration does recommend that council approve that resolution as presented. And then just for construction update, the ground floor is being prepared for concrete to be poured next week, and in preparation for the roof replacement, it's a total roof replacement at Robinson Grand. All the material was delivered this week, and was already placed on the roof, and they will be, the subcontractor will begin next week installing that new roof. And then the outside restoration of the building will be completed in approximately two weeks. Under police, the governor's highway safety, the administration and the chief, we had an opportunity, as well as Kim, finance director, had an opportunity to meet with the director of the governor's highway safety program for the state to discuss the coordinator position. We're forming a game plan to move forward with, hopefully hiring a coordinator here in the very near future. And then also had the opportunity to execute the contract on behalf of the city with the DMV to accept the grant, which is $473,800. And then that is for the entire region of the West Virginia High Tech Corridor region, up here in north central West Virginia. And then also, we did receive the resignation of Sergeant Quinn. He did give a two-day notice for his resignation, which left the department scrambling at the last minute to kind of fill, the backfill that, those duties. So today, we do have 40 officers on staff currently speaking. Which brings me to Police Civil Service Commission. They did have a meeting this past Monday, the 18th. They did approve the schedule to begin the new eligibility list, so the application process is now open. So we do have the physical ability test scheduled, and that's scheduled for October 28th, 10:00 AM at RCB High School. So if they interest in becoming a police officer, has an opportunity to come, take that physical agility test. If they do pass, they can then fill an application and then proceed on to the written process of the process. And then also, the $5,000 sign-on incentive that was approved by council has also been implemented in this as well for certified officers, so we're hoping that does have an impact. And then the Police Civil Service Commission will be meeting this coming Monday, September 24th at 10:00 AM, to begin the process for the testing of the rank of sergeants. And this test will, will include, for the two available eligible positions of sergeants, so we'll promote from this one task, two sergeants. Under the events, Jackson Square, the Cultural Foundation, Harrison County, will be hosting the Western Union Music Hall of Fame, a trailer for the general public, which is tomorrow, Friday, September 22nd, beginning at 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and then Saturday, September 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then coinciding with that, on Friday, is the area churches gathering for worship music, which will be from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. So there will be crossing over, so it'll allow the public opportunity to kind of hear a little bit of music, as well as see the Hall of Fame. The 37th Annual Liberty High School Band Spectacular will be held on Saturday, September 23rd. The gates open at 11:00 AM at the John Masing James L. Racer Athletic Complex, which is above Liberty High School. And then the Mary Stewart Concert is Saturday, September 23rd, at RCB High School, starting at 7:00 PM. Under the FOIAs, we did receive multiple FOIAs since the last meeting. We did receive one September 6th from Chad L. Taylor, Zimmerman Law Office, requesting any and all documents relating to, in general, on North 12th Street, vehicular and pedestrian accidents that's happened, but from March 29th of 2006 to March 29th of 2016, and all other information regarding North 12th Street. That information will be provided to them, and we did respond to them on Thursday, September 14th, and the information will be available tomorrow for that attorney on September 22nd. The other three FOIAs that you see on the manager's report, they all came from the same attorney, John L. DiPolo. He took a different route, sent to the individualized department. The police department received one, the code enforcement, as well as the fire department, all received on September, separate ones received on September 6th. We responded to all three of those from our office on Thursday, September 14th, and all information being requested regarding 1311 Philly Pike, if you remember where the tragic fire took place. That is the information they're requesting. That information was provided today, Thursday, September 21st.
Thank you. For the report. Unfinished business, consideration of second and final reading of public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg amending Article 937.05 B3 of the codified ordinances of the city of Clarksburg to revise the industrial pretreatment program fees for the city's wastewater disposal system. Notices regarding the public hearing be heard in the extended telegram on September 12th and September 19th. We will open this up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time. And now close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, consideration of first reading of an ordinance approving a modification to an urban renewal plan for lots or parcels of land situated in the city of Clarksburg, Harrison County, West Virginia.
Madam Mayor, I recede myself from this vote because I have some personal interest in the matter.
For the adoption of this ordinance on first reading is titled? So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of a resolution of the city of Clarksburg authorizing and providing for the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its Robinson Grand Theater by the issuance of its bonds in the principal amount of $3,561,494.
So moved.
Discussion, I've already stated on the record many times my opposition, borrowing money from this project, self-evoting bill, and this, and several other things, that's for that reason. It's going around the market.
So these are your comments in regards to the next three?
Correct, just to speed things up.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carrie Bowden?
Aye.
Frank Farrey?
Aye.
Marshall Goff?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Chad Segman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malta-Joe?
Aye.
Mayor Going?
Aye.
Consideration of a resolution of the city of Clarksburg authorizing and providing for the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its Robinson Grand Theater by the issuance of its bonds in the principal amount of $8,500,000.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carrie Bowden?
Aye.
Frank Farrey?
Aye.
Marshall Goff?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Chad Segman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malta-Joe?
Aye.
Mayor Going?
Aye.
Consideration of the adoption of the following forms and/or documents in connection with the financing for the Robinson Grand Theater and authorizing the execution thereof by the appropriate persons on behalf of the city of Clarksburg. Form RD 4427, operating budget. Form RD 1940-1, request for obligation of funds. Form RD 1942-9, loan resolution. Form RD 400-1, equal opportunity agreement. Form RD 400-4, assurance agreement. Form AB 1047, certification regarding department, department primary. Form RD 191011, applicant certification, federal collection policies. RD instruction 1940Q, exhibit A1, certification for contracts, grants, and loans. Standard form LLL, disclosure of lobbying activities if applicable. Certification of compliance in Form RD 1942-46, letter intent to meet conditions.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carrie Bowden?
Aye.
Frank Farrey?
Aye.
Marshall Goff?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Chad Segman?
Aye.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Malta-Joe?
Aye.
Mayor Going?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Councilman Kennedy, I'm confused. You, you vote on some things and then you vote against other things. And I understand, but I would like to have an in-depth reason. For example, you voted against the, the purchase of the YMCA.
Yes.
Okay, but now you're on, let me finish first, please. But now you're on the board of directors. I don't, that, that's a little bit confusing. Let me finish. You voted against the budget, which funds the Harrison County Senior Citizens Center, and now you're on that board. And now you, you know, we receive a, an award from Piper Jeffrey, which you gladly accepted, but you voted totally against the Robinson Grand Performing Arts Center. I'm, you know, I don't understand. I mean, I know that you tell us that you don't think public, that city funds should subsidize public entities, but, I mean, how can you be on the board of the YMCA and the Harrison County Senior Center, and then accept a gift from Piper Jeffrey for the Robinson Grand?
Well, first of all, I don't know how that's germane to the discussion of this particular thing, but to answer your question, first of all, I was not on the YMCA board when that vote occurred. I don't believe in billing out private organizations with public money, but this, this council voted over my objection to do so. Then it became a public asset. Once it becomes a public asset, we have a duty to maintain it, and so I've been voting to maintain it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Moving right along. Consideration of a resolution of the city council, the city of Clarksburg expressing support of the passage of the roads to Prosperity Road Bond.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I, I got into politics years ago because I was really concerned about government spending. I was really concerned about public debt, because someday, all of us sitting here are going to be gone, and our children and grandchildren are going to be paying off some of the debt that we incur for some of the things that we do. This is $1.6 billion, that's with a B. And as, as was echoed, as was indicated a little bit earlier by Councilman Segman, I went and actually read the actual amendment, I pulled it off the legislature's website, and Part C says, and I'm quoting from the amendment, that if this is passed, this will become part of our state constitution, this is the legal language. It says, quote, "When a bond issued as a forset is authorized, the legislature shall at the same time provide for the collection of an annual state tax." And then it continues to describe what the state tax can be used for. So breaking that language down just a little bit, it says, "When the bond issued a forset is authorized." So that's something that hasn't yet happened, that is to happen in the future, because this amendment has not yet passed yet, therefore the legislature does not have the authority yet to authorize these bonds. So it's an event to happen in the future, that's the time-triggering event. The legislature shall, word shall is a mandatory word, any lawyer will tell you that. So this is not voluntary, it's something the legislature must do under our constitution if this becomes part of the constitution. At the same time, that tells you when they have to do it, so they have to do it at the same time as when the bond issuance is authorized, which is again, an event in the future. And what do they have to do at the same time in the future? Provide for the collection of an annual state tax. Now, I know we have some propaganda here that says that there will be no tax increases. Well, this language says the exact opposite. In fact, it mandates the legislature, by the state constitution, must impose a tax increase. And therefore, I cannot support this for, first of all, because I don't support the tax increase, and second of all, I think it's being, I think that the people that are saying that's not going to raise taxes, I mean, I'm sure some of them are, just haven't read the language and, and really do believe that, but I don't believe that some people, especially, I think the people that designed this, are acting honestly toward the taxpayers. Further, even taking that one aside for a second, if this bond happens, and we borrow $1.6 billion, and we spend it according to the plan that's been released on certain road projects around the state, when we're done, we're going to have some new improvements here and there, we'll have some roads and some improvements to existing roads, but we're still going to be stuck in the same place where we were before, in that we still will not have the money to maintain what we have. We won't be able to maintain the stuff that's already broken that won't be fixed under this, because we're not fixing everything. And we also will not have money to maintain the stuff we're just about to build that will someday need to be replaced or repaired. We'll find ourselves in the same hole again, but we'll be $1.6 billion further in debt when we find ourselves in that hole. So for those two reasons, I'm, I'm voting no on this resolution, because I don't support the road bond, and I will be voting as a voter on October 7th against it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to make a couple of points, because I've done some background on this too, and I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't interpret the language that Ryan's[1797.95] that Ryan's pointing out, Councilman Kennedy's pointing out the same way. In my mind, they shall and they have is the way I'm reading it. We're being told by the governor, the senate leadership, the house leadership, the West Virginia Municipal League, the State Chamber of Commerce, most chambers of commerce in the state of West Virginia, the Harrison County Chamber of Commerce, that this road bond amendment will not increase taxes. If the legislature were to turn around and increase taxes, pass some additional tax to fund this grand road plan, it would be the greatest lie and hoax perpetrated on the citizens of a state in the history of the United States. So I just don't think that is the intent. The language legally can be interpreted the way Councilman Kennedy is interpreting it. I'm reading it differently and suggesting that what we're being told is what is going to happen, that the taxes have already occurred. That's why they passed the increased gasoline tax. That's why you're now paying $50 to re-register your car rather than $20. That's why you're paying 3 cents more per gallon on gasoline. That's why you're paying a new privilege tax when you buy a new car. So I just disagree on that and I support it. Item number two, one downfall in this or one scenario whereby taxes might have to be increased to support this. Because any bond, particularly one of $1.6 billion, and the state's not exactly flush with money, as you all know. Any bond is an obligation of the state of West Virginia if the citizens so pass it on October 7th. If perchance, five years down the road, let's say half or a quarter of the people in the state of West Virginia who are drivers quit driving. They're not buying any more gas. They're not buying any more cars. They're not using the roads, not paying taxes on the West Virginia Parkway or Turnpike. The state would be in a situation whereby we would not be raising that $130 million in revenue that they're counting on to pay off these bonds. I don't foresee that scenario happening. I don't think it's any more likely than Kim Jong-un being invited to President Trump's next birthday party. So again, could there, could there be a scenario whereby additional tax would have to be raised to pay off these bonds? Yes, but we could all be hit with a meteor tomorrow too. So for those reasons, I will support it.
Any further discussion?
Again, as Councilman, I was doing my due diligence and after talking with others, I foresee the same language as Councilman Bowden did just explain and also in articles with the governor saying that there will be no new taxes, not to say you're committing new taxes that are already here. It's foreseen, I don't make the unknown, but I definitely see roads as a major priority here in the state of West Virginia. And that was a big thing when I was becoming on council. I loved it. And I think it's really going to help Harrison County. A lot of the projects I've already seen with 79 and so forth, so.
Well, to Chad, you know, we talked about the West End Bridge and replacing the lights. Well, the actual bridge is on the list for replacement. So not only will we be getting new lights, we'll be getting a new bridge. And it would not have happened as quickly, you know, without this road to Prosperity Bond. So, you know, we have, you know, a lot to, you know, in our favor.
Thirty million dollar improvement at 79 and 50 interchange.
Yeah, I mean, that in itself is--
It was down here.
Madam Mayor, if I might, you know, in my 42 years as Director of Finance, we probably issued hundreds of millions of dollars in bonds. And one thing that I think is missing here is, first of all, they did raise those taxes. And what they've done is they, they've said that those taxes will cover the debt service on the bonds. But the other thing that's going to be in the bond issue is going to be a reserve. The people that buy these bonds, they're not going to bet on the $130 million. They're going to want an additional cushion above and beyond the $130 million, which has to be built in to the taxes that they raised. Otherwise, nobody can buy the bonds. So I think that Gary is right. There could be something that would happen 15 years down the road, but with the reserve and with the estimates probably conservatively drawn, because whoever buys these bonds, if they think the revenue projections are greater or less than what they say, they won't buy them. So I think in that case, yes, they did increase taxes. But I do not see unless, you know, you're going to be having large banks buying these bonds who buy government bonds all over the country. And if we're able to sell these bonds, you could be assured that they're going to buy these bonds knowing that they feel comfortable as far as the debt repayment. So I think that something needs to be said.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Gary Bowden?
Aye.
Frank Farre?
Aye.
Marshall Goff?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Chad Segman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maltej?
Aye.
Mayor Goins?
Aye.
Consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to Rule 6.05 of the Rules and Regulations of the Police Civil Service Commission of the City of Clarksburg, West Virginia.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to Rule 6.13 of the Rules and Regulations of the Police Civil Service Commission of the City of Clarksburg, West Virginia.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of setting the date and time for the observance of trick-or-treat for Tuesday, October 31st, 2017, from 6:00 o'clock to 7:30 p.m.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council comments?
I just have a couple of quick things. Again, you know, the fall cleanup, I'll let everybody know, you know, what the schedule is and we'll provide the endouts. And then the final drug walk for the season or for this year is going to be held Monday, October 2nd. And we're going to meet at Staley Park and do the Staley area. So we'll have a route for that. So I just wanted to remind everybody--
What time?
5:30.
5:30. You know, they'll set up with information tables and then we'll take off for the walk.
And I have to thank--
That was everything I had. Oh, I do want to thank my husband for participating